Good evening, welcome to the City of Franklin, regular scheduled meeting for August 3rd, and we're coming to you live tonight from the Tewksbury House. And we want to say thank you, Robyn, for making this possible, and for everybody else that participated. And we have one large turnout. I think we do. Give yourself a hand for taking the time to come. That is really sweet of you. We have, um... We have five first readings. We'll begin with, um... Oh, we have seven readings. We have seven first readings. We're going to begin with Resolution 22R41, Mr. Cox.
Hi there. We will open a Finance Committee meeting at 6:01 with all members present. Resolution 22R41, a resolution authorizing payment of funds to participants in the New Franklin, Ohio EPA water project from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and declaring an emergency. Now, we've talked about this numerous times in the past. This is, uh, the businesses along 93 that agreed to connect up to the water line, uh, to help us get the, uh, the funding from the EPA. And this is just a couple of the bills that have come in, and we will continue to see some more bills coming in. But for this one, we have Manchester United Methodist Church was previously reimbursed $5,901 and now has submitted receipts for the remaining dollars of $735. And DRJ, joint business as community health center, uh, they incurred excessive expenses for a total amount of $8,415. Mr. Mayor, do you have comments on this?
It's consistent with the agreements in the sun. It's in line with the previous ones as well.
Right. Okay. Do I have any questions or comments about this?
No, I added up the amounts and they checked out.
Okay. All right. So I'm in favor of waving the three on this and moving forward. Perfect. Moving on. Maybe. Moving on to Resolution 22R43, a resolution creating a separate fund for revenue received from the One Ohio Opioy Settlement and authorizing expenditures from that fund consistent with the guidelines set for in the One Ohio memorandum of understanding, and declaring an emergency. And this is basically an accounting, uh, procedure. We're receiving the money, and we need to have a place to put it on our lectures, uh, and this is what Mrs. Doyle will set up, but number 2072, the Opioy Settlement Fund. Uh, Ms. Cook, any comments?
Not really.
You're like a rock star.
Sorry. We set up a separate fund for, um, this, and, um, through the auditor's office, um, that's how it has to be handled, and there are specific items that can be purchased through using this money, and it's pretty strict. So we're trying to get this set up. We've got our first installment, uh, in, so, first couple installments in, so we want to, we've got to make sure that we've got it in line with the auditor's direction.
Yeah, we participated in the litigation, and, uh, the initial revenues that we received, uh, $5,836 from Giant Eagle Settlement. And then the state, uh, has a separate fund, uh, that they sell with a variety of, uh, with a number of defendants. Uh, we expect to receive somewhere in the range, and there's a 70% figure and 100% figure, so somewhere in the range of $40,000 to $59,000 in state funds. And the first installment came in $2,539. Uh, as Ms. Cook mentioned, uh, there are guidelines for how those funds can be utilized. Those guidelines are set forth in the One Ohio memorandum, and that's referenced in the legislation. We did not attach a copy because it's 50 or 60, it's a pretty big piece, but it's available. Uh, and essentially, uh, it can be used for drug treatment, drug prevention. Uh, we think probably with the amounts that we're getting, it would be primarily allocated towards the there type of, uh, resources that, uh, that we offer, or so. So this legislation sets up the fund, but then also, uh, the council is authorizing those expenditures within the guideline set forth in the memorandum, and that's what's required as well.
Questions, comments?
I'll answer them.
Great. Comfortable waving the three on this? Fantastic. We'll move on to Resolution 22R44. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to dispose of unheeded, obsolete, or unfit personal property pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 721.15D, and declaring an emergency. And this is something we've done in the past, uh, to, you know, get rid of property, uh, so anything over $1,000 or has an estimated value of over $1,000, we'll look to try to sell that off and recoup some money from that. Correct? Questions or comments?
Uh, it is, this is all consistent with the Revised Code Section 721.15D. And the $1,000 figure, uh, first of all, council will authorize us to dispose of this property by this resolution. And then contained in the resolution is the additional in Section 2. Uh, right now, the various departments, we're looking to have an auction, and probably an onsite as opposed to an online auction, uh, but we're discussing that. Hopefully early fall. Uh, any item that has an estimated fair market value in excess of $1,000 will require council's approval. But we can do that by motion, and that way we won't have to go through the three reading process, et cetera. So once we have that on the list, items that are going to be auctioned, we'll bring a list, the department has to submit lists to you for any items in excess of $1,000, and then we'll ask for motions to authorize the sale of those items. So that's what the second part of the resolution is about.
Yes, sir.
We've done this in the past.
Yes. Any other questions, comments?
Do you think we should use the online versus just the onsite?
Right now, I think we're going to try the onsite first, and then we go to the online if, you know, if we have items that just don't move for some reason.
Will this give us the ability to do either or?
Yes.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Well, did you need online before?
I think we've done it both ways in the past.
But eventually they stopped wanting to do onsite.
I mean, we kind of think so with the items that we have.
Anyone else? Wave the three?
All right.
So we will have to wave the three on that, and we'll jump over to our supplemental agenda. And Resolution 22R46, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a four-year agreement with Manchester Local School for additional police services, and authorizing the hiring of an additional full-time police officer for the New Franklin Police Department, and declaring an emergency. So we currently have one officer that works there, has been doing it for five years now, four, five years, as a resource officer between the three schools. And, uh, it's just worked out fantastically. It's been, uh, something, shared cost between the schools and, and City of New Franklin. Uh, the officer, uh, has had built fantastic relationships with the students and faculty there, uh, just done a wonderful job. And now we're looking to, uh, or schools are looking to add a second officer for this. Uh, and they will pick up 75% of the cost of this officer, this full-time officer. Uh, and 75% of the cost that they're picking up, more than covers the school days. There's 184 schools and teacher school days, and you break out 75%, it's only, it's about 195 days. So, so more than covers the cost of the officer being in schools. Uh, and I think this is a fantastic opportunity. Uh, a couple of quick questions I have is, one, should this be two resolutions versus one, having everything in one? And then it talks about the, uh, the full-time officer being on probationary period. If we promote someone from the part-time status, do they still have that probationary period?
Uh, yes, that would be correct. Uh, and the reason we combined them as one is the process that would have to follow. And we brought it to you as a supplemental item, which we try not to do that very often. But the school year is fast approaching, um, and discussions were had, uh, I think from our police department and also from the schools. Uh, we have, uh, school board representatives, uh, also, uh, the Superintendent Sean Morgan and the Fiscal Officer Jennifer Rucker are all with us. So we had these meetings, and, uh, and the sense is, we need this person, and we might get this person on board as opposed to the start of the school year if we can. It's a long answer to a short question, uh, so forgive me for that. Uh, but the process will have, we will have to hire an additional new officer. We don't know if that officer will be the officer that gets placed in this position. So, you know, if they have somebody on board to fill the position, we have to, we have to hire somebody first. Uh, and so then, as soon as that happens, and we are going to ask you to consider this tonight, if you can support it, we could then move forward with the hiring process. We would look to hire from within. We'd have to post it for 10 days. We've got good candidates in our part-time. Uh, although the part-time, number of part-time officers, as you know, here and everywhere else is dwindling. Uh, so if we could post that within the 10 days, fill that position, the full-time position, and then proceed immediately to post this position within the police department, uh, we've agreed that the school would be able to sit in and help screen who that individual's going to be, because that personality is very important. But ultimately, the decision would be with our police department as to who to place there. And we could have somebody there, um, pretty close to the start of the school year, if we're able to do that. I, I do want to mention too that, uh, uh, the, uh, we do this for the Manchester schools, and we have four school districts in the city, and we're well aware, uh, and, uh, but we only have one school that has buildings in the city. Uh, we, uh, the other schools, we, we have been briefed on what they're doing for security, but we, we would not be in a position where, for instance, we could say, okay, we're going to share an officer with Norton. We don't have jurisdiction then, nor do we in Canal Fulton, nor do we in, uh, in Coventry Township. So this is the only school that we can do this for. Uh, and, uh, I think as you pointed out, it's a good economical benefit for the city as well, because those three months, those off three months gave us an extra officer that will help us cover vacations as well. So, uh, we really think it's a continued win-win for, for the city and for the school committee as well.
Chief Pickett, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I can't cover it. I just think there's a need, uh, for more presence in the school. Officer Turbovich kind of had him running around a lot, so it'd be nice to have somebody, you know, to help him out with it. But I'm going to answer any questions by the way.
Question again, was in regards to our part-time staff. Since we'll be bringing on a new person, let's say he's already been a part-time staff, and promoted up, would be backfilling that part-time position as well, and we levelize the department with this one, a whatever number that, I think it was 16 or 17 in the legislature.
Yeah, I think this will take us 18 full-time, am I right?
Yep.
And I was, and I'll speak for you on this, Chief, that I believe there's a, that we're always looking for capable and competent part-time. Is that a fair statement, Chief?
Yeah, right now we have three part-time officers that work consistently. Uh, this will take one away from that number. Uh, so we're always looking for another part-timer. Yeah, we're going to try to fill that part-time slot, but this will help with numbers as far as needing fewer part-time officers to fill shifts, especially in summer time.
It can be hard to fill Turbovich's shoes, so this, you know, I don't, I know they're not filling his shoes, but he does a great job. I think everybody from school would agree. Anybody who had kids go through, um, he does a fantastic job. He has a great rapport, and I'm glad this school recognizes that you can't just pick any old officer and throw him into a, into an elementary or high school building and expect that you're going to give him the success that he has.
I think you're right. And if he's fun to watch with the kids, because they really like him, and he really wants him, that's something we can't change.
And the staff, and the staff.
Well, you know, it makes a big difference too, uh, as those kids matriculate, and then the community relationship they already have with the police. The other thing I want to mention in terms of the, as they discuss the needs for two officers, uh, it's a split campus up there. So we sort of, if you consider the elementary and high school as one campus, if you had one officer there, but now we've got the middle school, an entirely separate campus, and, uh, really, really neat to have two officers to cover those two geographic areas. So that's another moving force behind this, I'd say.
Anybody from the schools or audience in general have any comments?
I would just say I appreciate you talking to us. Excuse me, us working together on this project. Uh, we came together and, and I just really feel like we're meeting each other's needs and helping each other, so, um, I appreciate you letting me say that.
And everybody knows that's shock organ superintendent. Okay, uh, comfortable waving three on this? Oh, 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 okay.
I think it's a fantastic idea, obviously, to have another officer in school, and for those kids to get comfortable with those officers and all that, and the same. There's no way for me to continue on without sounding like a monster, but kind of what Mayor pointed out, I represent a lot of the side of town that goes to Norton, and with that taxpayer money and that being benefited, you know? So I just, I won't get into it. I know 2018 I voted this way, and I sent my piece then, so I'll just feel like to help people, you know, just for that reason, not for any other reason. I say you speak to, it's needed, just for that.
Okay.
To be clear, though, the school is, is funding 75% of the cost of this officer. So the, the city funds that will go to this will be administered with a pay because the summer vacation coverage would have a full-time officer. Uh, so if we pay 25%, do we get 25% benefit? Do we get 20% benefit? Do we get 30% benefit? You know, it's, it's in the range. It seems like it through.
Oh, it's a good deal.
Yes. I, I, I'm not arguing. Thank you for explaining your vote.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll ask you to wave the three on this. Fantastic. We'll close. Finance Committee meeting at 6:17.
I've seen in this one, 22R45.
And I.
That's fine. That's a good one.
It's right wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the revised.
You don't have to hate me, I'm just walking.
Making a mistake, come on. We're still close.
Are there President and Chief Resolution 22R41, Mr. Cox?
Yeah, she all get invited. All right, we'll open up this period. 6:17, we'll, all members, the President, we're on pace to legislation. Uh, we're on the same track, we're on pace to legislation. First one is the Resolution 22R41, or North Star National 222, and there we go. Paying contracts and declaring an emergency. Kind of cut me out a little bit, but I talk about Brian a little bit. The first one, like Vanderburg Road and Valley Crest.
Both this one and the next, this one and the next. We're going to be similar. It has to do with, uh, uh, the conditions of the roads that we had decided to pave, and arguably, uh, we didn't pave it soon enough. Uh, it required more prep work than was anticipated. This one is the 22, 22 paving project. The next one you'll have is from the 2021 paving project, which, uh, bled over into 2022. We didn't finish that until spring of 2022. But Brian, can you speak a little bit more to it, uh, what's, what's the situation, how it ran into the overage?
The condition of base of the road needs to be dug out, more material used. Uh, just to pick up on the width of Comet Road, and then it's wider than what was anticipated. So those were, where those figures came from. The Valley Crest allotment was a lot. It was pretty bad. It was more deplorable than the rest. Uh, so instead of just half fixment, we dug out areas that were pretty bad, so we don't see the reflection coming back.
Also, if there had been an inch, but if you take an inch and a half out, you don't always know what you're going to run into. But I think a couple of things you can go, you brought up, maybe something was given about, uh, when there's extra contingencies on some, and I talked to Brian earlier, Eric had something to look into. Again, it's something that needs to be done, or get done. And, uh, we need to take care of it. Actually, I'm going to talk to the 22R42, the other one is 25. I said, I did say 2021, and here it is, the resolution that's been discussed. Which was Comet, Hampshire, and just, uh, the whole allotment. There's one from this year, like gave the Valley Crest allotment. Is there another one in there?
There was Vanderburg, the other part of Comet, and the whole Valley Crest, Colander, Churro Forest area, but...
So maybe it sounds like this is actually going to take you in the long run. You can do the job now. You're not going to have to, you're not going to keep yours, you can do it.
Weather, weather is a factor too, so I mean, I can't say it's going to last forever, but it's going to help.
I'd like to sit up, talk to Eric, and, and May of, May 4th, we passed a resolution for $888,000, $256,000. It's a general paving, uh, program. 76, we did $27,465. And we've got these two for a grant total of $1,009,400 year-to-date on paving, which I think is a great, you know, effort on our part, to correct the roads and get it back, which we did. So I'd like to see us putting money back into stuff, but all the rest is around.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else have any comments or questions? They look fantastic. I've been on, in the last two days, I've been on Comet, Hampshire. Uh, today I drove through Valley Crest and, and all of that. It looks, it looks great. Hopefully it looks that good, you know, it moves up. Depends on that letter we get sometimes. All right, that is, I will be asking to wave, uh, R45, also.
We're opening up our community development at 6:23. Uh, Resolution 22R47, a resolution authorizing expenditure not to exceed $20,000 for prevailing mailing and interrogation of the community survey component of the 2022 comprehensive plan, declaring an emergency. This is part of the Congress where we're getting a public input for the comprehensive plan. I believe Mr. Daniels, and I believe Eric, you can probably speak a little bit more to this.
No, for sure. Glad to wait, but I'll have to yell.
So there, there's been a little discussion about this, and, and, uh, I don't know that the $20,000.
They're still working on getting under. Um, we added some things at Pope Myers for the rest to the end of the survey to help the cost of what I thought was going to be, in fact, I'd originally asked for like 18, I think, 18 or 19. Um, but then the, uh, so there were some, they wanted some free fill-in-the-blank, uh, answers at the end, and those are going to be difficult and complicated. It's happy that somebody's going to have to manually see, if you ask an open-ended question, has teachers know? Uh, it takes a little bit more to grade paper, where you have to read the response, and then that's got to be added up, how many people said this word, how many people said that word. So that was, that was a bit of a complicating factor, but, uh, the Stereo Committee overwhelmingly believes that, especially given the number of years it's been, uh, since we've, we've done a survey, that we really need to do a paper copy of the council or the neighborhood. So you think you're saying anything is almost enough at this point? I think, I think 24 is enough, but, uh, Art said that, as we're, Nolan, he's the chair of the Survey Committee. So, yeah.
Uh, we just, uh, because we didn't have a final survey, we still don't as of yet, but we're getting close. We've had several drafts, and we had a couple of meetings, and then, uh, an online review of Pope Myers draft at this point. Uh, we just got some numbers back in today from, we've got two companies that are in contention for doing the printed survey, uh, and their numbers include printing the survey, stuffing the envelopes, uh, return postage, uh, doing the data processing of the surveys, uh, and then providing us with the data and with the image copies of the scans of, it's, uh, the scans of those surveys. As Jack mentioned, the Pope Myers, we, as the Survey Committee, had originally said what we didn't want to do, any open-ended, just write-in questions, because they're hard to deal with when you're dealing with paper. If you're online, they can capture this, it's just, you know, like the ASCII character design. But if it's on paper, then it either has to be optively character-recognized, to recognize what the words are, or if somebody writes a paragraph, then you have to have some way of identifying that, and having somebody do the key-did entry of that, and that drives a cost of significant. One option would be to add those open-ended questions on the online survey, because they do this nice little chart of the frequency of words, and words that are used more frequently are big, and the ones that are used less frequently are small, and it gives you some information, but if, if that's saving to evidence, in one case, I'm just going to go through this page here. In one case, about saving about $1,200, and then with the other company, about $1,500 for dealing with those open-ended questions, I decide to say, well, for the ones that people are going to write, you know, do it in person, uh, on paper, then we don't do the write-in questions, because we're not, and I can't comment that's even. I, I can't comment that's really giving us. Uh, yeah, there's some other options as well. We could, for a writing section of comments, just create a box that they can stand and just look at if there's anything at all in that box, and they put a flag in the data set, and as we're analyzing the data, we can say, oh, this, this one particular survey, this number had come, and we can put it out in the, and have somebody type those comments in. We could, and that is our committee or a group of volunteers or whatever, if we wanted to do that. Uh, another possible option saves some money, uh, is to not do a reminder postcard with all the books that were received. It was a follow-up postcard that he sent out to remind people to do it. Uh, if you take that component out, then two books that are really the main contenders are definitely under $20,000. We also looked at it from a hindsight, number standpoint, that on the last survey, we got 30% response. So because that number of, of the 5,800 we're going to send out, we're going to get 30% back. But if we're doing it online, and, you know, 20 years later now, maybe a good percentage of the responses will be online, so we won't have that many, even if we get 30% response and we make a book, might be paper surveys that we have to pay postage on the next day as well. And the last option, now that we've dived the survey and got it pretty close to where it's going to be, um, we're planning on including a zoning map, because there's several questions about how land use, which is one of the major topics in this comprehensive plan. Uh, we originally planned on printing that as a separate map as reference, an eight-by-eleven piece that will begin with the survey. Um, since we've, the number of questions has dropped back a little bit, and because of the cost-effective nature of the way they print, where they use an 11-by-17 piece of paper, and they print two of those from the back, they give you the pages of the survey. Our questions would fit on seven. We might be able to just put the, uh, the zoning map on the back cover of the booklet and save the cost of doing that. So in, based on the numbers that we have right now, contingent on what the final survey ends up being, $20,000 is probably a good number.
I'd like to make comments, Mark, so it's important that we did this as a mail-out, just because some people, they don't have a computer savvy, but then we're talking about for 1,200 or 1,500 bucks, taken out of place where somebody can make a remark. I, to me, I don't, I don't support that.
What?
You're saying that you take out, to save the 1,200 or 1,500 bucks. No, you said to take, save the 1,200 or 1,500. Yeah, but I'm saying, I don't support that, because if we're going to, the reason why we're doing it as a mail-out is some people don't do the
the reason why we're doing it as a mail-out is some people don't do the computer, right? So I don't think we should take their, by the way, to make a remark that we, that some of us look at.
Can I, can I, can I clarify?
Sure.
There's two types of write-in questions, uh, that Pogmeier has added to the survey. Three of the questions are, in one to two words, how, what you see in the future of New Franklin? In one to two words, what, uh, do you like most about New Franklin? And in one to two words, what do you like the least about New Franklin? Those could be the cost due ones, because they have to be optically character-recognized.
We just don't wanna do that.
Right, but on a paper survey, we could have a box where people could write in whatever they want, and then we identify that somebody wrote something in there on that survey, and then we can go capture that.
Okay, so that would be, that would be an extra in twelve or fifteen for that?
No, that's, that's only, uh, to do that, identify that box from a programming standpoint, we just do it for twenty-five dollars.
So that, that, the simple questions are the ones that are cost-effective?
Yeah, it's the simple ones where it's one to two words, because you gotta identify and put those character together into a recognizing word, and that takes some, some programming chops and some extra algorithms and stuff that they have to develop.
That would be for anything that anybody could do if they're gonna write it in for twelve or fifteen hundred bucks? That's up to committees. We're not sure what the charter, that's, you think that's...
I, I, and I think that's the goal here, is for the committee to have the authority to make those decisions as a group, if, if by, uh, by a, a committee or council. I, I think...
I, I'll oppose that.
Yeah, absolutely, well, we have funds, well, we have funds. Let me just make something clear, we want all of it. So we want, we want it all to be on the paper, what, what Art is trying to lay out is, are safe options, should council have a problem with, because council has...
I'm just saying, I would, if, if we're gonna spend, it's gonna be either sixteen, five, or twenty. But make it very thorough, that everybody has their voice, whether they know how to run a computer, or they wanna answer a thing instead of what's your, if two words was, I would, to me personally, okay?
Just real quick to talk to that, if, the highest number that we have, which was from, uh, data for research, to do everything was twenty-two, five, seventy-seven. So it's a little over the twenty thousand, but...
I would be fine with that, and if everybody's opinion, no matter how...
You'd be fine with raising it to be allowable, yeah, to twenty-two, five? But you can say, you still don't have everybody's in, you haven't said, this is, he's having one, so we don't...
We don't have, we don't have a final survey, so they can give you a hard, you know, not-to-exceed number, because they don't know what the final survey's gonna be.
So this'll just be something we're gonna take time on, and then find out if we have to add?
Correct.
Correct. Now, still wanna get stuff where we're gonna have to, in two weeks from now, we're gonna have to add to, we might as well just... That's all I can add, and I, I think everybody should have a voice, and every question, have to God. So let's just get a bit on that, if it seems like it's out of control, then that's a council, like, that decision. We're just kind of in it.
Great, everyone. I don't know if I need to mic.
Yeah, you do.
Um, I think what the issues are, is that we wanna have one hundred percent, let me rephrase it. We wanna have as much participation as we possibly can in the survey. The last steering committee meeting did not establish anything other than the first draft of the, of the survey. At our next meeting, then we would decide what are the avenues. The original proposal was to make it available as a quick reference code, as one option. The second option is to make it available to anyone that calls or asks for a written copy. To be either hand-delivered and/or mailed to them so they can fill out the survey. So it's not an either-or, it's a what, what is the best method of communicating to the community so that we can get the responses back. Furthermore, it's not about the twenty thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand, or eighteen thousand. It's about the fact that we need to vet any organization that's going to take part in managing the data. Because it has to be able to parse from this group and this group, so we can take and tabulate the data so that we can start making the plans for recommendations. So until our next meeting, which we have not had, we have not reached this point that we speak of, and I personally think that we are a little premature on requesting for funds, when we have to even decide how we're going to deliver this, so.
My two, uh, blunt things, we just improved the resolution for, so we got something on.
I would, I would recommend that we, oh, it's not a bad idea to put the information out to the public, because again, we wanna maximize, we have a marketing issue, marketing challenge. We need to make sure every resident has an opportunity to report their thing. It doesn't matter if they do it online, it doesn't matter if they do it hard copy. At the end of the day, we wanna make sure that every member of New Franklin has an opportunity to voice their concern. So it's not a matter of which is better, which works. It's that you have a generation of people who will find what's comfortable to them in order to take part in the survey. So that is the goal, what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. But as of now, uh, funding it is hard to carry on, too, so. Because as we did in the past, we did RMPs to determine which organization would best fit the demand or the needs of the request. So if I'm trying to say, hey, company D, company B, company C, I would prefer that council and members of Pogmeier, that any potential client is saying, hey, which is going to be the best option for the best man in our box? Because it's clear, we haven't got that far, so that's my view.
So I, I have a question then about that timeline, 'cause I'm, I'm new enough here that I don't really follow this. One of the reasons I wanted to get this on was because of three readings, so. And in my opinion, we are not in hurry in any way, shape, or form. I believe, especially since it's been eighteen years since this has been done, that we need to do this correctly, meticulously correctly, we need an overwhelming amount of community confidence in the process. So what I was doing, was really just trying to get ahead of the horses a little bit, uh, and, and start the first reading. I'm curious, if it's amended, if, say, we keep this as a third reading, uh, it's amended on the second reading, we then have to have three more readings?
We don't have to, so we can wait.
Well, we could wait, but...
I mean, we do that a lot, so that's pretty important there. So I think if that pool, we got back to a good number, or some way of use, we can, I would be okay with waiting that on the first reading. I don't think you're reading anything on something like that, that we've already discussed, and people know what's going on, this is a prudent argument or something to vote on, I would have no problem waiting on it.
I've got a question for Michael. What, what do you think you guys are gonna have a recommendation back? Are you thinking two weeks, you think, or two months, what, what is realistic?
Currently, we're still in the final draft of the survey. So theoretically, the consultant would recommend that, let's get them established. Send the survey to the committee members, so that we can take it again and make sure that it makes sense. That'll be the final draft. At that point, they do a Google poll, to see availability of every member of the committee. So once we get the next step of actually taking the survey within the committee, then we do a poll, and then we take the best available ways we may or may not do it.
So it sounds like it could be in excess of a month. The reason I was asking is, we've got another meeting this month, and we've got the first, second week of September, so we could just ask for timeline, let it ride, but it's certainly more than that period of time, if I was able to take it from now.
But the great thing that Jack pointed out is the fact we're not in hurry. We want it done right. Doesn't matter if it takes three readings or now, if we push it off to the next meeting, we will still make sure this is accurate. At the end of the day, our goal is to get as much exposure, as much exposure to as many people as possible, so that we can tabulate the data. The larger the data set, the better the answer's gonna be, so the week before, like, what? So, again, let's get to the next process. We're a little premature on, on the, and I, I trust Pogmeier's ability to, to, uh, make surveys, which is their profession, and then give us the direction for us on how we should best move forward. I'd ask that we get, like, a false table.
Thank you, Mike, Art, I see you, hold on a second.
Let me just mic up. Uh, I'm, I'm about to step in it, but you have to make... Proceed from a procedural standpoint, I think it's a good idea that you put it out here, because as the committee continues to discuss, it would be kind of fruitless for your committee to talk about a twenty thousand dollar expenditure, if knowing that there's no way council would support that. So I think that was your point, and that's a good idea, and to get that number floating out there, so that now, that, that the, the script, the, uh, survey committee can now discuss exactly what they wanna do. Uh, and then, but what's still gonna be required is a second resolution, which can be, it, it could be passed as an emergency, it could be passed on the first reading, where the steering committee comes in and says, okay, here's our recommendation, here's who we wanna use. And in fact, by that point, we would have to have a, a proposal. Uh, and, and at this point, we're, and maybe it's just as well to, to take time on this, so that you don't lock yourself into the twenty thousand. It's out here for the public to see and know that it's an option, but let's say it comes back at twenty-two, five, that's gonna be a separate resolution, uh, and, uh, for councilmen to consider, that, but what is also gonna be necessary is send that recommendation from the steering committee, because the steering committee is a recognized component of the comprehensive plan process. And when they make that recommendation to you as council, then councils will be authorized to go ahead and approve that expenditure, and, and authorize us to sign that contract. Does that make sense?
You're saying you could just on time?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any harm in that.
And it's what we did for the next, uh, seven?
Well, well, that'll leave that up to you, it's, that's, that's up to you, you know, I don't have a opinion on that, it's not made me.
Uh, Steve Recker, could you, could we change the language on it? That would go on to secure bids, maybe, just a different language, or not put a hard number, okay, we'll proceed now. But just, uh, are you able to do that, then?
We could amend, if you amend, you know, that, we might have to go back to additional remarks, you could be amended then, for the point. That assumes that your survey committee wants to go on, get those bids, and wants to do the, the...
I think we would add, I think we could buy, uh, use it, they're all, it's a lot of, I think, yeah, I was just gonna say, with the purpose of course, but...
Uh, I'd like to address a couple of things, like, you got a mic rod, I was...
I'd like to address a couple of things that you, you brought up, like, uh, one, we have looking for data connection companies. Nobody did quite bit of research and found, uh, two of the companies that are the two that were, uh, the most considered are two of the biggest research companies in the country. And as part of his communication with them, is that they would be one hundred percent compatible with in a data format with survey monkey, which is what Pogmeier's going to make use of. And in fact, uh, in creating a unique identifiers, I went out and researched this item for an account with Nick, with a survey monkey to find out whether or not they could accommodate unique identifiers in the landing, uh, address for that stage that would be, would be created on the survey.
Mark, Mark, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, I'm, I'm, no, this we need to do. Now, we're just kind of speaking about this, right? I don't wanna get too deep into the weeds of...
Oh, okay, there's, uh, six to eight week lead time for either of these companies. There's a six to eight week lead time for either of these companies. So we have to have, and these are in fact. We said that if it's, if it goes to the timing issue, if, if we're okay waiting until another month and a half goes by, then we're going to be another month and a half before we can actually send that to the survey.
I think Jack, you have a good point. About eighteen years ago. I'd rather this thing is not done, right? And it hurts when it takes it in. If we want to keep on the mic comment, and we made it for, you know, monthly, you know, four meetings, three meetings, and it's $20,000, we find out you guys agreed to me 22, and that's where that's really, that's legislation. You're like, well, for all this time, we went and get all this time for $20,000. To me, personally, I just want to get it right. Everybody have the same opportunity, whether you're using a computer, or you're just sitting there, and your mail comes in, and you get every option that people on the computer. I didn't need a first step, because I'll do mine, I'll do mine, pull it out, and I'll send it in like a new letter. Because that's where I feel comfortable, not using a computer. I feel comfortable doing this here. So I want the same option that somebody that doesn't need a copy just wanted. That's my take. You guys are going to do what guys are going to do. We're committed, and we got some kind of good screen.
I was just going to say, as the survey may even understand, as a councilman, I'm supportive of the government, I think, again, here. We need to see if this guy, the line is.
I don't know if we're on the phone. What's up with the, do you sponsor, do you want to show it, or do you want to?
I don't think it would hurt to continue to have the discussion. I like, I like having continued discussion. We can table it. I honestly don't care.
You sponsor it? Okay.
So, do you have one with your thoughts?
Oh, yes. Well, I'll be.
Hey, I appreciate the work of the steering committee and everybody that are going through it. I tried to put together this survey. I am not at all comfortable with looking at $20,000 to bail out a equivalent, a package to every household in Franklin. Eighteen years ago, when we did this, that was the perfect thing to do, because we don't have, we didn't have the internet, we didn't have a computer. Now, I understand there are people that don't. I am tired of speaking, Tom. But I think to bail these out, bail these packages out, and to expect any type of response coming back in the mail, versus the number of responses we'll see on the computer. People just jumping on the computer and doing this survey program, and they don't see the point of $20,000 to do this. I mean, we send out mailers to all the residents, but know about it, we try to advertise it the best we can. When, when somebody is not comfortable with the computer, we make sure that part of the message is being sent, that's, that's the fault, not by me. That part of the message is being sent is that we will bring the survey to you, we will mail the survey to you, and put postage or you mail it back. We will send a police officer out to your house with the survey. We'll, we'll get you the survey if you want. We'll do whatever it takes to get the survey to you, and we'll even come back and collect it from you if necessary. But I don't, I, I'm sorry, I think a lot of things have changed in eighteen years, and I don't see the benefit of mailing out this package to every household in Franklin. You know where I'm at.
How many people think we should table? How many people think we should? Go ahead.
I'm okay with it. He's going to have to read it about the time.
It's not hurting anything, and it keeps the debate going. Obviously, there's a debate to add, so.
All right, let's wrap up at 6:47. Thank you.
Just to clarify, some members of council were looking at, I'm also glad we're not turning our back on the plan here. So this is our understanding.
The price of gas would prevent this, but apparently not.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stopp?
Here.
I'd like to make a vote, just, just, in July, six to sixty.
Second.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Mr. Stig.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
My name is Margaret Grigsby. I live at 16th Valley Crest Drive, New Franklin, Franklin. And I've been here several weeks now. With a concern about the name of this, about three homes from ours, or the front yard is really technically a junkyard. Not exactly sure what I'm doing there, but last week, a truck drove in, it's a large camper, and I first opened this, this house wasn't quite as bad. But as I'd come back, when I first opened April 28th, I just told them, sort of had something to be done, but it had several weeks. So I did wait a month before I returned. Then I came back, someone had been ill, was dealing with this, and I returned. And then I did come last year, so, last month, and it seems like there's some type of problem we can remove from Mr. Huthick's yard. I guess I'm just very discouraged. I know that there are other areas in New Franklin that aren't very good as well, but Mr. Huthick has been doing this for a good three or four years, maybe there are others as bad. But technically, he's pretty much got his property blockaded. When I drove by tonight, I think a car could get in there, but in the morning, it's pretty much blocked off. So he's pretty much played the game, if he's aware that there's concern. And so I think he's probably trying to win it. I really don't know what to do from this point on. I'm just terribly frustrated, other than maybe calling the health department. There are two middle school students in this property, and it looks pretty bad. I don't know what the inside of the house is like, but I, and I don't see the girls very often. I did see them for the first time this summer, at the end of last week. Again, I'm not really sure what's going on. If he's collecting junk, or taking things that people don't want, and just storing it in the front of the property, we really don't know. I guess I would like to know the status as of today, if there's anything going on.
Thanks, Mr. Grigsby, and thank you for your patience. You wrote this up the last meeting. I've talked with our legal people again. We had a conversation, as a matter of fact, yesterday, again, about this. We became aware of the trailer with Louisiana plates, I guess. That's being checked out. I haven't gotten back to the police yet. I don't know if they have an answer. I don't know if it's still there right now or not. Yeah, okay. So we're checking that out, but the, the bigger problem is the, one man's trash is another man's treasure. And there was a pretty epic case down in Canal Fulton about 15 years ago, that was front page news for a long time. We are trying to sort out, we've got the authority to remove anything that's in violation of our zoning ordinance, which essentially is trash, unlicensed vehicles. Now, when you take an item that's pottery, for instance, and put 50 pieces of pottery, it doesn't necessarily fit the definition of trash, but it's certainly unattractive, and, and it diminishes the property, the adjoining property values. What I'm getting to is this, we're, we have to be careful on behalf of all the residents that the city doesn't come in and remove items that we're not allowed to remove, and expose ourselves to liability, expose the city to liability. So that's, that's the tricky part of this. What's going on specifically at that property, I can only guess. As you probably are aware, we did come in, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, and got everything out of there. And whether or not there's some bad feelings about that, and now that's sort of tit for tat, I don't know. It will take me to this, that we are, we met also with, and we're talking to two different consultants. I was going to bring this up in, in my mayor's report, of, we're, a full review of our zoning code, and in fact, a development of a unified development code, which would also potentially include a property maintenance, some specific property maintenance provisions, which are very tricky. And I think probably, when, when council addresses this, we're going to try to give you something to look at, but eventually, when council addresses this, you're going to, it, it may not be a one-size-fits-all. It may be different provisions for, for different sized lots, et cetera. But what we see in some of these is some language in there that addresses common items that are, that are presented in such a way that they're offensive, and they can be considered, not just trash necessarily, but also established or presented in such a way that it diminishes the property values of the adjoining properties, and that would then give some authority to get a court order to remove those kind of things. So that's really what we would need to go in there and get all that junk out of that front yard. We don't have that right now. And as a result, we have to be careful with what we do take. So we're, we're trying, but we are gonna, well, I'll speak to you a little bit more in my mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do appreciate that, and I know it is, it's very confusing, especially to other homeowners that are nearby. And I guess just my last comment will be, and I respectfully suggest this, that on your way home tonight, if you want to go up Rennick Road, you turn right on Valley Crest Drive, it's real obvious where this home is. At least you can have a vision of it and see what it is, and it is bad, so. I, I thanks for, thanks for your patience, and I know it's going to take some time, but I guess I just want to keep, keep going with it. Thank you.
I do. Because it's very difficult. We brought the pictures in this issue, you want to ask them to go out here. If you want to camp, it's around the corner, so they can see it. But some of us probably won't drive by.
Right.
I hate to say that. You brought those in some before, and you can show them, in your very good picture.
Well, this isn't as bad as what it is today.
And I would say, don't just drive by, continue on, and look at the quality of the yards in that neighborhood. We're not talking about regular sprawl out, you know, urban or rural area. It's a development, there are lots of consistent sizes. It's, it's different than what, it's different than the type of neighborhood that most people would push back and say, hey, this is my 38ers, I want to do what I want to do. So that's where some of the discussion about the type, you know, how we could structure it so that certain geographical areas within the city, or size properties, could be regulated in certain ways, wouldn't be offensive to those that say, don't tread on me, at the same time is maintaining the great efforts that people in that neighborhood do to make the neighborhood a beauty.
Paul, what else would the health department do that we are not doing? Because I know you've called them in other places before.
We've had them involved, and there really isn't, there's, there's, there's no discernible health department issue. What's going on behind closed doors, I, I have no clue. That would be a different department, and I, I, we haven't been involved in that regard.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Yes, if you want to say.
Yeah, I do.
No, you probably do.
Okay.
Zoning. Do you have a zoning, zoning inspector?
Yes.
Do you ever, does he ever do anything?
Every day.
I mean, I hear a lot of zoning, is what I hear, in my opinion. I've been living in New Franklin 40 years, and all I've heard is crap from all that junk on 619. I complain and complain, and it's still there 40 years later. What the hell are you guys doing? I mean, he can give you these excuses, what's trash, what? You know what the hell trash is. You know what trash is. You know that 90% of this cars parked where it shouldn't be parked. I just came down Rennick Road, right at the corner, there's a truck parked in the front yard. Does anybody care? Is only man care? You drive by and don't see it? What's, what, what is happening? I mean, you all sit here and tell me, resolution this, and resolution that, and this money here? I want to get down to the nuts and bolts to the, the people who live there, who are harmed by all this crap. Nobody does anything because we can't do it. You're a city. I thought that's what a city could do. It could control itself. I don't see it going on here. I don't see anything. Cars, car next door to me, he's got his truck parked between his yard and the street. Been there. Anybody do it? Who is, I live on Rex Lake Road, who is the?
Sir, could you state your name and your address, please?
John Marashino.
John Marashino?
Correct.
And your address?
702 Rex Lake Road.
702 Rex Lake Road, thank you.
Yeah. All I'm asking for is to see something happen, to see you guys face up to your responsibilities. All I hear is excuses. We can't do this because it's a piece of pottery, and you have to know it's a piece of pottery. Isn't it a junk car, or the car sitting where it shouldn't be? Move it. Do your job. That's all I'm asking. I don't see it happening. Well, it's trash. I try to avoid people, tell them where I live, not to come down 619, so they don't see all that trash. Why haven't you guys done anything with that? It's been there years. Tell me why you haven't done anything. I'm waiting.
I guess, you're the first time I've heard it, and somebody has something, and I can't drive around and say, I don't like that, I need to do something.
Don't you ever drive down 619?
All the time.
You don't see that?
There's some stuff going on there that is.
It's cars, trucks parked all over, just, it must be 30 of them.
On the south of the road?
Yeah. Exactly. You know it's there. Who's zoning here?
Who's what?
Who does the zoning inspector? Is he here?
No.
Well, that, again, and, and I, I don't know what this survey you're talking about. I've been here 40 years, and I've never gotten a survey.
I got one eight years ago. It was mailed out to everybody.
Not me.
Maybe 18 years ago, and it was mailed out.
Well, maybe I, I don't remember 18 years ago. You know, I'm old.
30% of people turn their back in, so.
Well, yeah, I can apologize, because I don't remember 15 or 18 years ago. All I know is, I see all this, all only happening, and nobody does a thing about it. It's always an excuse, we can't do this, or we can't do that, or it's pottery, or it's this. It's a junk car. It's a truck that's been sitting there for years. Do something.
I'll look into 619, and we'll get, we'll get back to you on that. Those, I know the properties you're talking about. We'll take a look, we'll get back to you.
I hate to tell anybody that comes to New Franklin that way.
I appreciate that.
I think it's a shame. It's an entry into New Franklin. What?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Karen?
Sharon Goodwin, 6789 Hampshire Road. I would just like to share that Boy Scout troop 118 is having their annual fundraiser August 15th, which is a week from this coming Saturday, from 8 until 3 at Manchester Methodist Church. It's like their like fundraiser. So any support that anybody can help them with, be appreciated. They're also accepting donations up, or from 7:00 in the morning until 10:00.
You said 13?
The 13.
The 13, from 8 until?
From 8 until 3.
8 until 3, and do they accept cash donations? Say someone just wants to donate to them because they need the funds. This is their big fundraiser. They could do that also, right?
I don't think they were turned down.
But sometimes people don't want to buy something, because we all have junk. And they, and I'm afraid, Mr. Marashino, if she came to my house and start picking and choosing what are you going to get rid of, like my son does.
I'll be there.
I'll be waiting for you. Bye. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to say? Any questions? Kelly, our first reading is Resolution Number 22R41.
A resolution authorizing funds to participants in the New Franklin, Ohio EPA water project from American Rescue Plan Act funds and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R41.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R43.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Our next resolution is Resolution 22R44.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to dispose of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit personal property pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 721.15D, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R44.
Second. Kelly, we have a first and a second.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R44.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Resolution Number 22R43. Oh, I'm sorry, motion passes 7-0. Resolution Number 22R43.
A resolution creating a separate fund for revenue received from the One Ohio opioid settlement, and authorizing expenditures from that fund, consistent with the guidelines set forth in the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and Declaring an Emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R43.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Make a motion and we adopt Resolution 22R44.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Stopp?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R forty-three.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Our next resolution is resolution twenty-two R forty-four.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to dispose of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit personal property pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section seven two one point one five D, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-two R forty-four.
Second. Kelly, we have a first and a second.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R forty-four.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution number twenty-two R forty-five.
A resolution approving a change order to the North Star Asphalt two thousand twenty-one paving contract and declaring an emergency.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution number twenty-two R forty-six.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a four-year agreement with Manchester local schools for additional police services and authorize the hiring of an additional full-time police officer for the New Franklin Police Department and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-two R forty-six.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R forty-six.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
No.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Motion passes six point. Resolution number twenty-two R forty-seven.
A resolution authorizing an expenditure not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for printing, mailing, and tabulation of the community survey component of the two thousand twenty-two comprehensive plan and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to community development and we're asking for time.
Time has been requested since yesterday. And I think that it comes to our favorite part of the meeting.
Time will tell.
All right, thank you. I want to thank Tim Cantor from Mason's Cove LLC, our property management group, for the setup here. First of all, for the beautiful venue, of course, that so many people have come now to enjoy it. But also for the work he does on nights like this to do all the setup on this. So we want to thank Tim. We want to thank Robert Keith for being so flexible. We're dragging them all over town and giving them new challenges. So we appreciate you taking care of us on the sound and the video. Hope it comes through. All right, I'll try to go quickly. It just has some high notes that we had a great event here for Al Bolus. Thank you again, Mr. Cotts, for the idea of dedicating that park and council for supporting that when you did and everybody being so patient while we waited for the rock to get cut. But that was a really good day for New Franklin. Not just, we're also happy to give that day to Al and he was so appreciative. But also, you know, the crowd of people that came, including state senator Christina Roganer, state representative Bill Romer, Summit County executive Eileen Shapiro. When you get those people in the city and on the grounds, it really, really helps. When the next time we have that ask and they see what the good things that are happening out here. So I want to thank council for all of your support on that. Two days later, we were over at, I don't know, two, three days later, the dedication of Benner Road Bridge. And again, they were back. Senator Roganer and representative Romer. We had three representatives from ODOT and the engineers were there. And I think that was particularly important because, as you know, that was a million-dollar project that the city ended up with about seventy thousand dollars. And the rest of it came from state funds. And I can tell you that the ODOT appreciated the recognition and the thanks that we were able to accord. And then we, and Judy was able to break away and be there with us, our council president, Mrs. Jones. And we cut the tape and Mrs. Jones got to be the first official vehicle across the bridge. So, yeah, you know, one comment on that, when we were there and the state senator made her comments and she said, well, you know, the bridge got closed in June of twenty and here we are in July, you know, of twenty twenty-two and you got this done in two years. That's amazing, you know? And we start to get a grasp of what, you know, the difference between public sector time and private sector time. And it just takes a while. So it seemed like a long time for us, but to get that funded and built and designed and built within two years is a big deal. So again, a tribute to the support of council on that. Here at the, we're still having our fun events. The, we had a over a hundred people for our movie night and our music nights in July. And we have another one coming up Tuesday, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. And we've been having a lot of fun with that. Our communications manager, Katie Smith, had an idea to prepare some candy bars for the, for kids. And our police officers have been passing them out. And on there is an advertisement for the, for the movie. So that'll be down here Tuesday. Doors open at eight. There'll be a Kona ice truck, an ice cream truck, and Summit County library is coming. And they're going to sign up, you can sign up for a library card. Those of you who didn't know, there was still one such a thing. There is. And they're going to raffle off some of the copies of that book. So having a lot of fun here. We've got one more music night coming up behind that. I want to mention the Tudor House barbecue Thursday, August twenty-fifth. I hope as many council people can come, please do. We might sell that thing out, which would be beautiful. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to discourage people from coming, but we've had good response already from our sponsors. That's our major fundraiser to fund these events. And so please, it'd be great to have a good showing by council. The tickets are fifty dollars. The menu, barbecued chicken, pulled pork, mac and cheese. We have a pastime band. We have all kinds of raffles and giveaways and we have a lot of fun. So, you know, so and two drink tickets come with that, beer and wine and soft drinks. So please join us for that one. Otherwise, I will tell you, all departments are functioning well here through the summer. Two projects we're working on, one is the codification of ordinances, what we've been talking about for a while. So we've screened two vendors and we're pretty close to making a decision that we'll present to council. And once we get that process going, it's probably going to be about a nine-month process to put that in place. The second thing I mentioned earlier was the development. We know that our zoning code is antiquated in a lot of ways. In some ways, it's what we inherited from the township. You folks have seen that and seen places where it just doesn't work. In the discussions with some consultants there to try to perhaps get somebody on board to guide us through that process, it's recommended that what we really want is a unified development code. And there may be other terms for that. But a document that has not just the zoning code, but also would have any type of property maintenance code involved there, subdivision regs. I'm guessing that Mr. Powell's probably pretty familiar with this type of document from his experience. So we are, what I will likely be coming to you with is a request for proposal, a resolution authorizing us to go out for some proposals for some firms to lead us in that. And the thinking is this, because that's going to be a lengthy process. That'll take six, eight, ten months. If we can get that running parallel to the comprehensive plan, then when we actually have plan adoption come spring or so, we can lift what's necessary there into this, into the revised plan and then be in a position. Because once we do, we'll have to adopt that whole thing. So we're going to try to get that in place and we'll bring that to you. All right, that's going on. And let me see, finally, well, second to finally, the Tudor House capital budget grant of three hundred thousand dollars. We're working on that. And it's, you're going to see a C-wall down here among the very, among the different items that are going to happen. But you'll be getting legislation on that. That funding, that's a city project. It's a reimbursement project. As there's going to be items that are going to have to be bid out. So we'll be bringing the legislation on that. Our first piece right now is we're engaging the engineers to put together the basic plan and the estimates. And when they have that, then we get the final approval from the state. If they approve the plan and the estimates, then we'll be coming to you for, to go out for bids, et cetera. So it's something that we hope would be completed by late next spring anyway.
That's the same project that state fund.
State fund. Yeah, all state funded. It's a fifty percent grant, but we can satisfy our fifty percent by the value of the property. So it's going to be all state money. We won't be putting any money into it. Yeah, that'll be three hundred thousand dollars of state funds. All right, and let's see. Lastly, very happy on the recommendation of council members and a couple of other people tweaked us on this that we have prepared a proclamation for May Patten. And I'll bring it over eventually, if you approve it, Judy Jones will sign it. But not too long ago, we honored Ora Snyder, who I think was a hundred and three? We thought she was the oldest resident, a hundred and two? And, well, what's a year when you're a hundred and two, right? Because she probably is, one oh two is enough, right? Hey, wait a minute, I'm only one oh two. Anyway, we found out about May Patten and I think, was she your teacher at one time?
Yep.
Yeah, Susan's teacher. So this proclamation reads, now comes the council of the city of New Franklin hereby makes the following declaration. Whereas May Patten, a longtime New Franklin resident, celebrated her one hundred and eighth birthday, one hundred and eighth birthday on April sixteenth of this year. Whereas May Patten was married to John Patten for over sixty years until his passing. Whereas May Packen generously and selflessly dedicated her time and talents to the community as a teacher at Coventry High School for over forty-three years, during which tenure she taught English, history, and college preparatory courses and led students on regular field trips to New York City. And whereas May Patten brought attention to New Franklin when she was featured on ESPN in two thousand eighteen in recognition of her years of loyalty to the Cleveland Browns, having attended the first-ever Cleveland Browns game in nineteen forty-six and having remained a loyal fan of Cleveland football and baseball to this day. Whereas May Patten has otherwise enjoyed her full life, including travels out west at a young age with her parents, which encouraged her as an adult to take two trips around the world. In addition to many visits to Blossom Music Center for Cleveland Orchestra concerts. And whereas, to the best of our knowledge, May Patten is now the oldest living resident of the city of New Franklin. Now therefore, in recognition of a life well-lived, the council of the city of New Franklin relatedly designate Saturday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-two as May Patten Day in the city of New Franklin and extends best wishes for many more years ahead. And I would ask for a motion to approve this proclamation. And a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Beautiful. So Mrs. Jones, you will execute that. All right. And then if, we'll make arrangements now, reach out when she would like us to bring that. And I'll let council know and if some people can come along, and including the press, great. All right, or at least we'll keep you posted. All right, excellent, okay. All right, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. And I do have to say, gentlemen, that I did make a point of saying at the bridge dedication that it was actually, I was representing all of us.
Yes, she did.
That you were there in spirit. Jack, do you have a comprehensive plan community report?
Well, actually, Mike is here, so rather than me. He is the chairman of the steering committee.
Greetings to all. Greetings to everyone. As the chairperson, I'm the individual that gives you an update because we've got such an amazing group of people. The last accomplishment that we've reached was to get the survey in a draft mode so that we can process it and decide how to move forward with it. At the end of the day, the survey is again a partial document so that we can use it in the future for planning and making recommendations. We will have additional outreach opportunities throughout the remaining of the year and until the, until the survey is completed, get as much information as we can. My question to everyone is to, when the survey is actually finished, to make it a point to be the voice of who we are and knock on your neighbor's door and say, did you get your survey? Did you turn it in? Because that's really, it's got to be at the grassroots level. It has to be at that level because the more information we have, the better the data, the better the recommendations can be. So as we stand, we've finished the second version of the draft. We will have that sent to the members of the committee. Our next meeting, then we will decide how to move forward, which we brought to the table today. I don't need to go into too much more detail. But at that next meeting, that's when we will make the recommendation. I stand firm. I believe that every voice is important. I think anything we do in order to reach out to our citizens here is a responsibility that we all have. And this entire committee here and our council members, including the administrative staff, support that. So that's where we're moving forward. If you have questions, reach out to me. Most people have my email and or phone number. And if you don't, just hit me up. I'm, you know, available. Anything else? For once or twice?
I don't have anything on that, but there's one more thing I wanted to say, if I can. Because I saw Mike come, well, and I think I saw Harley stuff on you. It made me think about motorcycles, which I'm not a big motorcycle guy, but here is a, I know, Katie, this is like the third time I've talked about this. I mesmerized. I stopped over at Buffalo Iron. And so here's a plug. And we're going to start, you know, Mr. Cotts, you did this a while back trying to feature our local. And I'm going to try to start at least maybe once a week, feature one of our local businesses on our site. And I'll get back to this. But Buffalo Iron is a motorcycle restoration business up on Manchester Road, just south of center. If you have not been there, do yourself a favor and stop in. Brian Thompson's, this is his business. And he does, to say restoration, it just doesn't do it justice. So I'll just shut up with this. He's got a bike up there. I was there this week. No, really, you should go see it. Have you seen it? That's going to be displayed at Sturgis. All right? It's a Grateful Dead theme. It's got a stitched leather seat with a design on the stitched leather seat and it's got the airbrushing. Years ago, what, there was a TV show where they used to rehab these bikes? This would match anything you saw on there. So do yourself a favor, stop in and say, Brian, Brian will probably be sick of it, everybody, you know? But tell him the mayor sent you and go see Brian. Really, if you like bikes, go see that bike because it's worth making a stop. So anyway, I saw your thing, so that's your fault. All right, thanks for the extra time.
Paul, why don't you make a challenge to every one of the council members to every week have a new business that we can talk a little bit about?
That's a good idea.
No, it can't be the same.
Yeah, we'll start. All right, good idea. Thank you.
Susan?
Just a couple of things. And when I say there isn't much going on, it doesn't mean there isn't much going on. It just means we don't have any big project to talk about. The daily stuff and the grind is going on and we're swimming against the tide, as usual. But we're finishing up our audit. They said that they should be done coming in maybe one more time. State audit is a lot longer than the independent audit and it's a little grueling. So we'll get back with you on information as soon as we know it on that. We also, myself and Diane Snyder, who's our payroll person, had our initial training on the analytics program. So we've started to work on that and learning that system. So that's been a big thing outside of what we normally do, that we've been doing for the last few weeks. So I just kind of wanted to bring you up to speed on that. That's all I have.
Susan, what type of range did you have? Is it online? Did someone come in? How many hours? I was thinking it'd be quite difficult.
Well, it was ninety minutes to an hour every day last week, Zoom and then shared screen. And, you know, then she's like, here, we clicked this and this does this. And I was doing that work and so was Diane. Well, they were talking and talking us through that. We still have a lot to go because the system itself can do so many things. And so finding the niches for what we want to start with, that can be valuable to us, like for the budget, preparation of the budget and for certain things in payroll, that'll be our big starting point and branching out from that. It's kind of like starting all over in VIP in some respects because even though they take you through and teach you those things, until you've got your hands in there and you're doing the stuff, you just don't know what you don't know.
And then do you have, do you have the ability that you can call? Like if you're in the middle of something and it's like, oh my gosh, I don't remember what she said or I don't remember, I wasn't shown how to walk through this. Will they give you that support also?
Yes, just like the regular VIP program, you have a help, you put in a help ticket and they come and walk you through it. They're very good with that too. And they will also, if there are specific reports that aren't built into the system, they will help you figure out how to build them and those kinds of things. So it's going to be a good program, but it's going to take a while to really use all the functions that, you know, that are available.
I'm thinking you feel comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I think that's exciting, that's what we do. We had any old business?
Uh, the mayor wanted to mention anything about the dragon boat race? Oh, yeah, I forget that. Uh, yes, boy, first of all, just another really successful, uh, event for the city of New Franklin. It's the host of the dragon boat, and if you haven't been, please come next year. Had to be well over, what, 1,000, 1,500 people? There was about 600 competitors. Uh, and there was well over 1,000 people here at the Porters Lake State Park, uh, Saturday before last. Uh, and, uh, our New Franklin community team, first of all, with generous donations from many of the people that are, that are here right now, uh, gathered $1,250 as a donation. This is a breast cancer survivor, uh, benefit. Uh, and then, uh, we also entered a team. Uh, and, uh, uh, Mr. Powell was part of that team. We had fun, didn't we? Yeah, we got cheated. We could have won the whole thing. There were, there are 27 teams. Uh, there's, there's two heats, uh, and then they, they combine your times, and then you have a chance to make the finals. There's a, uh, community division. There's a corporate division. There's a breast cancer survivor division, which by itself is so impressive. There's two teams here from, uh, just from New Franklin. Uh, there was a team here from, uh, Buffalo. There was a team here from Pittsburgh. There was a team down from Cleveland. Uh, huh? Kentucky had a team, and the breast cancer, uh, survivor segment of that. So our combined times for our first, for our two heats, we were fifth best out of the 27 teams, and we were third best out of the community teams. And that was after a really poor showing in our first one. We, we, we cut our time down from like 117 to 113, not that I remember, but, uh, anyway, uh, yeah, we shaved four seconds off. So now we were geared for the finals, and, uh, we were up against a team that had a 111, one, and then a 112, and then us. So we were ready, but so was the weather, unfortunately. And the storm blew in, and they had to cancel the, the finals, so we had to settle for third place, but we took a medal out of here again. So, uh, you know, but it, it was great fun and I, but I, those things, I just think they, they elevate, uh, New Franklin, uh, and, uh, let people know who we are and, and what a great community it is, what an asset this Porters Lake State Park is that we have here. Uh, so it was a great event. Thank you for reminding me of that. I have one old business. Uh, I was contacting again, the four-way stop at Congo and Vanderhoof. Did you mention that? Uh, yes. I've been, I've done a little bit informal survey on that, and I've tried to talk to some of the residents up there and we, and, and a variety of them who have been involved in some other ventures with us. I, I won't bother to mention names, but it's a pretty representative sample. And, uh, the, the one gentleman feels very strongly about it, and I respect that. A couple of other people, one who lives just about six doors away, uh, between the, between Vanderhoof and the bridge, says, I don't know if it's that big a deal. Uh, so we, but, but thought that once the bridge, that once that road reopens, it might be. So, uh, we're going to take a further survey on that. So glad you mentioned that. The Parks Commission is going to be meeting maybe once a month, and our August meeting is going to be at Grill Park. Really glad you mentioned that. I forgot about it. Because I want to invite everybody to be there if you can, uh, to discuss, to meet up there at Grill Park and see what might we want to do there. We have a, a Eagle Scout who wants to do a project up there, uh, and, uh, some new thing the kids play that I don't know what it is, but, uh, they, he wants to build it, and, and I know. And we, but, uh, so we've invited, uh, people from Grill to come join us there. And I think we're going to have a pretty decent representative group to say, what would you like to see here? So if, if council, if you can be free, uh, please join us. That's going to be Tuesday, August the, I want to say the 16th. Yeah, at 6:30 over at Grill, uh, Park. So if you're interested, come on over and join us. It'll be sort of an informal meeting. We'll, you know, we'll suspend the regular agenda, and we'll just really focus on, you know, what's that look like, what might we want to do there in the future, what would the residents like to see there? So, um, and, and I intend also to ask that question while we're together there also, get some further input from people about that stop sign. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other new business?
I would just like to ask if we're, if you're looking for vendors with a couple of licenses, uh, if the law's going to steer, I might be a lot of that. Sure, it might help you understand the process a little more. Excellent.
Any other new business? Any public input, public questions, anything that's happened at the meeting? And Paul, I'm assuming we don't have an executive session?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting will be August 17th at, uh, Council Paper, and we expect to see everyone be there.